All right, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. And we'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Ms. Ayotte is in North Carolina, her father is ill. And so I'm chairing this evening. The first item on the agenda is the minutes from the two January meetings, January 20th and January 24th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none will accept the minutes as submitted. Public comment? Did anyone sign up? Doesn't look like we've got a whole lot of public here tonight. I hope people are home watching on TV.
Maybe they can call in.
Well, this morning was scary. The temperature drops below zero again, or below freezing again. Let's hope the roads are a little drier than they were. Okay, superintendent's report.
Good evening. Before we start with the accomplishment and celebration, I would like to just give the board and our community a brief overview of what took place this morning. I know there are some questions. This morning was really unusual morning and unexpected morning. At 6:25 a.m., while the middle school and high school buses were on the road, I received a call from the bus company that informed me that it started to rain and the roads were very icy and dangerous and that they recommend that having the buses on the road. So immediately, I instructed the bus company to pull the buses aside, take them off the road, and to go and assess the condition of the road before getting the buses back on the road. At 7:05, the bus company informed me that they assessed the condition of the road and they believe they could proceed very slowly, taking in consideration student safety as number one priority. So at 7:05, the buses started slowly to headed to the high school and the middle school to deliver, not to deliver, but to take the students to the middle and the high school, while the buses were on their way to the high school and the middle school very slowly. At 7:25, receive a call from official of the community letting us know that they would like to have all buses off the road. I believe at that time, there was some major accidents in town. Actually, Willametteck and Wyndham saw 18 accidents that morning. So all buses were put aside and we decided to delay opening for the elementary school because we knew at that time that the middle and high school buses will not be available. At 8:22, we receive a call again from official from the town informing us that the roads were open and the buses could proceed. So this is a very unusual morning. I want to thank all the parents for their understanding and their patience this morning. I want to thank my staff and also the bus company, MNJ, for being very diligent and for keeping us informed. And also town official, with those really collaborative effort of town official, the Department of Public Works, very diligent with us and all the other officials in town. And also the parents for the inconveniences and my staff. Today, we had a debriefing because this is very unusual. We usually make a decision to delay school by 5:30 in the morning and let everyone know at that time there will be a delay or there will be closing. But this is very unusual. So we had to have a debriefing this morning and looking at the challenges that we faced this morning. And so we have some next steps to put in place to address situation like these, like this one, this one. Hopefully, we will not see too many of those unusual situations. We're looking forward to the spring, that will start, I guess, pretty soon. I just want parents to know because it was a very unusual situation.
Well, I looked out the window. I got a message from the WFSB text that said the schools were being delayed. I looked out the window and said, huh? You know, it looked okay outside my window, but there wasn't any traffic out there, so...
There were...
Yes, I know, they had an eight-car accident.
They were inside of the road.
Yeah, that's why there was no traffic out my window. Nobody was moving.
It was a sheet of ice.
But it was very interesting because it was only Columbia, Franklin, and Wyndham. It was not in Lebanon or Manfield. So I guess, I'm not a meteorologist, I'm not a scientist. It's a very interesting case to study. It's only a particular area, Franklin, Wyndham, and Columbia. So just to give you some information. So now we can go to the celebration. We have a lot of celebration. I'm not going to go over all of them. You had the opportunity to read them. But definitely would like to recognize Mr. Alex Kralinski. He's a senior here at the high school who would feature in the Hartford Current and the article entitled "Outline Alex's Accomplishment in the Indoor Truck This Season", including being seeded first in the state 1,000 yards and 1,600 yards. So congratulation to Alex, and I believe that he will attend an invitational at Yale. Sophomore Alfonso Vasquez was named the Hartford Current. Al team soccer also, congratulation to him. Barrow students, we have 12 students from Barrows that participated in the Cinderella performance, so congratulation to our Barrow students. Congratulations to the wrestling team also from the high school that won the 10th Annual Doug Myers Award, and so congratulations to them. To the Wyndham Science Department, and this I know is they're doing a Mrs. Carrie Lyons that will be retiring, but the Science Department received the ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Grant, and this is a very prestigious and very important grant, and we want to thank Mrs. Carrie Lyons for that. And hopefully, there will be others in the department that will continue that tradition. We want to acknowledge teachers from the St. Barrows Academy, a group of teachers who are working with the Department of Community and Family Partnership as volunteers with the liaison and with Eastern University to host "Let's Play Learning Through Games." And I believe we have about eight teachers from the Barrows School that are working on this project. Student from the Before and After School worked with Mrs. Margaret Chaney and produced a really, I would say, cute video, informative video for Willie, and they will future on Willie FM in the month of February, mid-February. So look out for them. So these are some accomplishment and some celebration of our school district. And right attached to the celebration is the community newsletter from the school district that you should have received by now, is in your pocket, but also it has been delivered to all members of the community, members that have children in our school district and others that do not have children in our school district. I just want to inform the board about an initiative that was taking place at the high school, the SAT preparation, an initiative that we have invested a lot of human capital and financial capital, effort and time. We want our students to do well on the SAT. As you know, the SAT is an accountability measure for the state of Connecticut, but also is an indicator that will allow our students to go to their college of their choice, and we wanted to make sure that we provide them that opportunity to be prepared. So we started an initiative of selecting students and inviting students that would like to come to a preparation session on Wednesday and Saturdays. I met with the group of students twice. We asked them for a plan, what is their suggestion and their ideas, and how we can support them in the SAT preparation. And we started this Wednesday because Saturday, oh, Saturday was this, what happened on Saturday? Something happened on Saturday? No, we haven't Saturday. Wednesday we're closed, we started Saturday. Yes, Wednesday we're closed, we started on Saturday. We have the day, so we'll have eight sessions with Lenz &amp; Lentz, that's the company providing the classes. But in addition to that, we are doing things internally at the high school with Khan Academy and some other strategies to prepare them. I want to thank the high school team for the diligence in this matter. I also want to thank our high school teacher, Mr. Mojer in the math department and others, and Dr. Youngberg that really has worked hand in hand in making sure that this is accomplished.
Dr. Garcia. Go ahead. Thanks, Tracy. Out of the 40 students that were identified for the program, how many are all 40 participating?
Forty of them have been invited. I don't know how many attended today. I know that last Saturday, about 27 or 30 attended.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, 27 or 30 attended. I will ask Mrs. Vanessa tomorrow how many attended today.
Dr. Garcia, only 40 of our seniors, or juniors actually, juniors are below proficient?
No, I'm pretty sure there are more than that, more students than that. But we selected 40, and Mr. Neil Weathers looked at a band on the scale of students in a band, and we select a student from that particular band. And also, not only that, there's open to anyone that is willing to come and want to put the effort. So invitation was given to more than the 40 students selected to attend.
And any sophomores? Are we thinking, you know, future planning for passing this exam? Or is it the 40 that weren't proficient? I understand focusing on them. Are we doing anything for those that are proficient to help them bump up their scores?
So the things that we're doing is that we're focusing on Tier One in the school to make sure that the juniors and the freshmen, the sophomore and the freshman get the appropriate education at Tier One. This is not something we want to continue doing all the time. We also focusing on acceleration and intervention during the school day. We have Reading Plus, a new initiative that we're using, and we also have the Khan Academy. However, it's still very valid across the country. ELSB, for example, is doing the same company, to offer some extra support to students to take the SAT. So meanwhile, we're doing things in the school, in the high school, to address the ninth grade and the 10th graders. This is particularly for the 11th graders. And so next year, we continue to do this again for the 11th graders. So the current ninth and 10th graders, we've received Tier One, Reading Plus, Khan Academy, plus this program if we continue with them when they get at the 11th grade.
And Khan Academy is being administered during the school day, after the school?
During the school day.
During the school day. How much regular instructional time is that taking up?
Well, we ask them to use the Khan Academy for one hour a week. Depends on how they want to use it. It's freedom of the teacher if they want to do it in one day or two days, but we ask them to at least one hour of instruction with Khan Academy.
So that takes about 20% of their instructional time every week?
Correct.
That's a significant amount. Is that putting back their MAPs and stuff like that? Or are you anticipating they keep up with the MAPs? Well, 20% is a decent amount.
It's an hour per week.
Right, so if you have five hours per week, if they have each student for an hour. I mean, Echo has more, but traditional students don't.
Well, research recommends that at least when you're going to intervene and provide support to students, that you have a program that goes between 45 minutes to an hour.
Okay.
So that's what the research recommend. And looking at where do we want to end goal, we believe, and because we did not start at the beginning of the school year, that one hour a week would be appropriate for students. Teachers also have the discussion, the ability to reduce it to maybe 45 if they believe that is not necessary, but we recommend one hour a week.
And does that include, does that provide enrichment as well as prevention?
At this time, we're giving it for enrichment also, we're giving it for celebration.
Yeah, Khan Academy allows diagnostic assessment.
Yes.
Whenever the kids are functioning, that's where their practice is. So if they're well above the benchmark...
Then the practice at that time, right.
I know I signed the permission slip for them to start it, but I didn't know that much about it, and I'm assuming if I don't, that other parents probably don't, and maybe board members don't know that much about it. So I know it's an online-based thing, but I wasn't sure, is it just for students who need help?
No, no, no. It's not only for students that need it, for anyone, because as you say, diagnostic and it's also adapted. So this is where you are, then they give you that baseline data, and that's where you start. But if you're above, then you start at your level.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Dr. Garcia, I have one other question about that. Is Khan Academy still free, or is it charged?
Yes, it's aligned to the College Board, and so as a member of the College Board, then you receive that benefit.
So in the future, is that something that we could use? Because we now have intervention slash enrichment time for kids, right? So maybe in the future, we could use that because it's free instead of taking it out of instructional time?
So in that, currently in that, that's what we're using. Khan Academy is basically more math, it's very basic, although it does not have a lot of resources or content when it comes to ELA. It's more math. So that's, right now, at this particular time, that's what we're using for math.
For math, okay. So kids could potentially be getting a lot of Khan Academy.
Yeah. And, you know, we want to continue using it, but we also are focusing strongly on Tier One instruction. We want to, we know that it's important to have these tools, and we want to continue using them, but the strong focus is what is Tier One. And although we're using it at this particular time, we still like to look at, we're using it as a Tier Two intervention. I will send Tier Three at this time, but I would like to focus later on in what is more specific for Tier Three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just some information about the high school. As you know, the high school was selected to be a Commissioned Network school because it's a focused school. And so we are, we will proceed with this initiative. The planning process will take place February to June, and we will get back to you with more details about this. So it's not a Commissioned Network school at this particular time. It just selected to apply for Commissionate Network, and we have to develop a plan and based on the plan, and based on the presentation and the plan, then we will be selected or not selected. But since we're a focused school and Alliance District, I'm pretty sure that we will be selected to be...
Did we apply for this last year as well?
We were selected last year, but because we had a change in principalship, they put it on hold. So we were selected last year. Finally, now is when they're coming to do the planning with us, between this month and June.
When the middle school was first a Commissioners Network, when they first started doing turnaround schools and stuff like that, changing a principal here, I think it was well at the time, we changed a principal because that was an option. So that doesn't, is that fulfilled? Is that how it works still? I don't, things change, and I'm not trying to question you, I'm just trying to understand it better.
Yeah, so the Commissionate Network plan has changed a little bit, if you look at it compared to what was done at the middle school many years ago. So they're not asking schools to really go through this transformation of change in leadership, et cetera, et cetera. The plan is much more flexible. However, last year, once the high school were selected, because there were some consideration that the principal will not be in place for this year, the State Department of Education put it on hold until we have someone in place.
Perfect, thank you.
Budget update. Mr. Johnson, principals and central office, everybody has been working diligently in getting the budget ready. We will be sending the budget to you on Friday the 16th. Keep in mind that this is not the final budget, this is a draft. This is a budget still for discussion with you, with the board. We have in a workshop, I believe, on the 27th, I believe it's 27th or the 28th.
22nd.
22nd.
The 22nd?
22nd.
Oh, sorry.
22nd. It's a week from tomorrow.
Oh, Thursday.
Day after the...
Okay, so that's the budget workshop. I don't know why I have the 27th in my mind. Do we have something on the 27th or the 28th? We do have something on the 27th, I think.
Presentation.
The presentation. So we have another workshop with you on the 22nd, so you will have the opportunity over the weekend to look at the budget and come back to us with suggestions. I'm pretty sure we're not where you want us to be at this particular time, but we want to give you the opportunity to review the budget. I also met with my administrators once again last Friday and received some suggestions from them, and so we're using those suggestions as we look at the budget. I do want to say that it's a budget that has, very inclusive, from administrators to central office, everyone has been involved with the process. And then you have the first reading of the revised Board Policy 9325, Conduct of the Board Business. And the policy committee met last week, or two weeks ago, and made some recommendations for that policy, and here is the first reading of that policy. That's all I have for tonight, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay. Any questions for the superintendent about the presentation? Okay. So Finance and Audit Committee hasn't met, but we do have the next board finance budget workshop on the 22nd. And then the schedule that went out of the newsletter says that the superintendent's forum for the public is March 12th. Do we have anything between the 22nd and the 12th?
The presentation to the board is on the 27th.
The 27th. We have a presentation to the board.
All right. Now, is that gonna, is that gonna be an opportunity for public? We haven't had much opportunity for public input so far, so...
So in the workshop, in the workshop discussion, and last year you did it, in the workshop discussion, once the board discussed the budget, you did give opportunity to the public to ask questions. And in the budget presentation also, we do give them the opportunity to ask questions, to present suggestions.
Okay, so there will be some opportunity for the public to ask questions about the budget process on the 22nd and the 27th is the presentation?
I have the last calendar that I got for Wyndham Public Schools, it says the 28th. Was it moved to the 27th?
No, I think it's the 28th.
28th, all right. I was just, I was looking at the newsletter that went out of that one.
It's the week after the...
Is it Tuesday or Wednesday? Tuesday is the 27th, Wednesday is the 28th, so it's the 28th.
It's the 28th, yeah. It's the 28th, yeah.
That's what I had in my calendar, and we said the 27th, I'm like, it's, oh, that's not right.
It's the 28th.
28th, that's good.
Thank you.
All right. School planning and design?
Yes. Oh.
What's happening?
At our last meeting, we discussed briefly the need for the town to assemble and assign the building committee for the approved high school renovation project. And I'm given to understand by conversations I've had with members of the town council that they in fact are doing that very soon, this week, I believe. They're deciding how many, who, and what their charge will be. And as you know, that we've discussed in the past, that we have many building issues, old buildings, buildings in need of renovation. The conversation also included Companeros Arcade School, how, what, where, when, and that's an ongoing conversation, of course. We certainly want all of the input that we're getting from staff and parents and members of the committee is that, and the district, that we want going into the future, Companeros to be a vibrant, expanding program. So designing that physically in what space is going to be a challenge, but it's going to happen, I'm confident. Right now, we're educating each other and the superintendent and, you know, the ongoing process. We haven't engaged in a renovation project of the high school's size ever, I don't believe, right? I don't think we've ever done anything that big. No. So...
We built Barrows, but we haven't done a renovation.
Yeah, renovation is a huge, huge project, 225,000 square foot building. So it's an ongoing process, and everyone come first Thursday in the month, every month. That's it.
Okay.
That's it. Questions, comments?
Policy committee, we've got a first reading on the packet tonight, and anything else to report?
No, the other thing we talked about was Tracy's concern about why coaches are allowed to transport students, but teachers and other staff members aren't. But we looked into that, and it seems like we already have a policy and a form in place. We just might not have been utilizing it, but I think...
There's a policy and a form in place, yeah.
And there might be an insurance concern that we had too, so that was going to be looked into.
We did get the answer to that. I don't have it here with me tonight, but Nada Rosado, Mrs. Rosado from the town, did the research on Friday, with an answer, a written answer from the insurance company. So we have that. I could put that in the packet for you tomorrow when we sit down. Not tomorrow, I'm sorry, Friday. Yeah, but we did receive an answer.
Anything else? Questions? The executive committee did meet to continue discussing the structure of process for evaluating the superintendent. We expect to have something to, for the board to actively consider at the...
Retreat.
At the retreat next Wednesday. And it's going to be kind of a discussion that the board is going to have to kind of decide between simplicity versus complexity. There are a lot of possible things that the superintendent has to do. If you try to put everything in the evaluation policy, it gets so complicated that it's not clear where you are, I don't think. On the other hand, if you make it too simple, then maybe you don't have enough guidance for the superintendent. So we're going to have to find a balance, and we'll talk about that at some length, I think, next week. That pretty much absorbed the time of the executive committee. You were there, Ms. Lambert, is there anything else that...
I was.
Yep.
No, I arrived when we were talking about that, and we just did a little bit of a discussion on the high school renovation project and where it stood. It was more a status update than anything.
Okay. Yeah, well, I did, I did attend the town council's, well, you and I both attended the town council's administration, finance committee.
The finance administration and blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, the finance and administration committee meeting last night.
It goes on for like 17 different words.
Yeah, it has a long title, but it's finance and administration and a few other things. They are going to recommend to the town council meeting next week, a committee of seven people, one of whom would be the chair of the Administration Finance Committee, Mr. Crich, six others to be appointed by the town council, or to be recommended for appointment by the town council's nominating committee, which consists of the mayor, Councilman O'Brien, and Councilman Fantoli. Out of the 13 or more applicants that are currently in the pool, there were, they had 13 last night, they did say that the applicant pool is light on experience with construction projects, finance and management. So they would like more applicants, frankly. And so this is an important project. It's probably once-in-a-generation opportunity for the community, for those listening on television. If you have interest, requisite experience, and the time, there's a form online that you can fill out and send to the town manager, and the town council will make a decision about appointing people next week, but they probably won't actually make the appointments for another couple of weeks after that. So that's where that process stands at this point.
Dr. Sewell and I both spoke for expediency in forming the community to get this project moving.
Yes, I frankly would like to see them get a request for proposals out. That should be doable before the committee's appointed. The committee would have to evaluate the proposals that come back, but their request for proposals itself is largely a boilerplate document because we're not building a new building. We already have a footprint for the facility, so the blueprints are there, at least for the outline of the building, the ed spec is there, and the rest of it is all kind of standard boilerplate stuff that goes along with requests for proposals of this kind. We've done one before, so you could kind of pull one out of the file and adapt it. We ought to be able to get a request out, and it would take at least 30 days, or it would take about 30 days to get those back. In the meantime, hopefully, we could get a committee in place to review the proposals when they come back. Anyway, that's where we are with that at this point.
Just to add that there was an article today in the Chronicle today about the building committee.
I didn't read the paper today.
Yeah, it was an article there, and I believe it said, what, it said seven members recommended next week.
Yep. Well, the town council will debate that. They were going back and forth between seven and nine, and the difficulty with nine, I think, is that if they, if they, if they feel like they number, the people in the applicant, they don't have enough qualified people in the applicant pool already, it'll be easier to find seven people than to find nine people.
I can understand that, but if we have to break off subcommittees, like we did with Barrows for FF and E and other things, seven is a kind of weird number to have to do more than two committees with, without the chairperson sitting on multiple committees.
It's possible for the building committee to constitute subcommittees that report back to the building committee, that members would not necessarily have to be members of the building committee itself.
They can consult, I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, what they need is information. Well, they'll figure out how to operate, whether they're seven or nine.
Mr. Klager and I can both attest, though, when you sit on a committee with only three members, if one person can't make it, it's kind of a chair and one member making decisions.
It's a difficult, it's a difficult balance to try and find first people who, in the community, that meet those general qualifications personally, in their background, to work on a project like this. And then having too many of them, even if you have enough qualified people in the pool, it becomes cumbersome. Mrs. Lambert's correct that you have to have enough folks so that the committee isn't overburdened with subcommittee work and the like. But if you have too many people, you have, you just have, it becomes burdensome and difficult to manage. So seven is not a bad number. Five, if they're all dedicated to the work, could do it, but...
Well, at any rate, it's, the challenge is currently before the town council, it's their responsibility.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. And a number of us, a number of us have presented ourselves at different stages in their meetings to encourage them to make the process march, hopefully, gently, because it is their process.
Oh, all right. I missed it, I'm sorry. Okay. I guess we're ready for action items, if there's no further... I guess we're ready for action items if there's no further discussion on the committee reports? That being the case, we had the first reading of the Policy 5118 on homeless students at our last meeting, so our last business meeting. Well, actually, if the motion comes from the policy committee, the usual assumption, Robert's rules basically say there were at least two board members on the policy committee. Therefore, the committee can put the motion on the floor without further ado, if that is satisfactory.
Were there two members? Because one member has resigned from the board who actually put this policy forward.
It was me and Mr. Flores Alvarez.
And he's no longer, so officially there's only one member of the board.
Okay, well, I'll entertain, well, all right, just to make sure that we don't have any confusion, I'll entertain a motion to.
I make the motion.
Which?
All right. It's made and seconded that the board approved policy, revised Policy 5118, homeless students. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2018-19 school calendar in reference three. Somebody like to make the motion?
Some moves.
All right, any discussion on the proposed calendar?
I'd like to, go ahead.
We keep doing this, we didn't even plan this.
I'm just curious about the midterms being moved to a full day and why.
Midterms not moved to a full day would be full days.
Thought I read that somewhere in the packet.
So that's incorrect. Midterm for the high school will be, oh, okay, okay. So midterms currently at the high school are half days. And then all students get to leave for three or four days of school. So in consideration when the board asks about testing time, looking at the practices that we have current in place, this is a practice that is not aligned to our mission, to our vision, to our direction or to best practices. With the new tools that we have for benchmarking and for monitoring progress, there is no need to have midterms to this extent. We do have courses that end midterms, like the ECE courses with Eastcon, Newcon or Eastern, and those will be taken into consideration. But we believe that midterm still can be done in the classrooms and teachers will have the opportunity to offer midterm. But we don't need, but we do not need to disrupt the process for four days and have students to go home midday. In addition to that, when you look at English, ELA and Math, with the benchmarking process that we have in place, the midterm is in addition to that, so there's no need for that at this particular time. So we decided to have a committee at the high school that will look at this. We're not saying that we'll not have midterm. What we're saying is that there's no need to have four days of the week where students are not in school, those dedicated to midterm.
Well, I'd like to hear that, that you're going to put more emphasis on the benchmark assessment that you already have in place instead of doing essentially a redundant midterm.
Right.
Just because it's tradition.
It's tradition, right.
If that's the case, then I am all for that. I just.
So by the way, this was discussed with the executive board of the union and they're in agreement. And so we will have a committee in the next couple of months to discuss what are the best practices and how to get this done in a way that is beneficial to students and to teachers.
Ms. Lambert?
I have a question about the snow day clause. I think that from Christmas to the end of the school year, there's not a decent break for our teachers. It says clause added to reflect snow days in excess of five will be taken from the spring break. And I really think that teachers need and students need that spring break to reactivate. I think the staff needs, the maintenance and custodial staff needs that spring break to do some deep cleaning and to kind of reset the building for the spring. And I think that eliminating a spring break in any scenario is a bad idea. Right now, this calendar has them getting out of school on the 10th. And even with five extra snow days, that would take them to the 17th.
Okay.
It's not so much the end of the year, just like this year. I don't think the 20th is that late in a school year to have the students go.
So maybe we need to rephrase that. It's not the intention that it will be taken, that it can be taken. So we do not know what the weather will bring. I mean, for example, this year, this is really unusual. We have seven days that we have to make up. So we're going right now into June 21st, I believe. And still winter is not over. We still have, the meteorologist told us that we may have two to three more days of snow. So we could end up with ten more days of school. Not unusual, I believe a couple of years ago, there were ten days here. Still, that put us to the June 25th, I believe, 22nd, 22nd. Thus the day before summer schools start. But the intention is not to take away spring break. We understand, we understand that teachers do need a break and administrators need a break also and parents need a break. And the intention is not to take away spring break for anyone. So maybe what we should say there is can, meaning can, instead of will be taking, because it could be the possibility that we may need to take one or two days of spring break if it comes to that situation. Maybe one year we may have fifteen days that we have to make up.
Who will make that decision? Who will make that decision?
Well, that will come back to the board. Because the calendar is a policy, it comes to the board. For example, tonight, I recommend to the board that we use March night. So any decision to take days has to come back to the board. However, this was put in the calendar because then parents will be aware. If it's not on the calendar, then parents are not aware. But I think the language will be taken could be a little bit strong and it's not the intention of this administration to take away spring break.
I didn't think that was the case. I'm just saying that I think that that April vacation is absolutely necessary. But also, the shortening of the summer vacation is not necessarily a bad thing either. I understand we have temperatures to worry about, both in August and June, but studies show the longer that they're off, the more they lose. So if they have to stay a little later in June, I don't have a problem with that because that means they're going to lose just a little bit less over the course of the summer. And that April vacation, in my opinion, mentally, physically, emotionally, is needed for all of our staff.
And so there is a school of two thoughts. You, your suggestion is well taken and you're, however, we do have, I believe that it's better to take the days on the spring break and in school early in June. So both have valid points, both have their pros and their cons. This is not the intention to take away their spring break whatsoever, so we could rephrase that. However, it's a practice that is used very commonly in Connecticut and in other states. And that is on the calendar to give some type of security to the school district that they have an avenue in case the numbers of days are tremendous and exceed ten or twelve days.
Okay, so I would recommend that you change will to might.
Okay.
M-I-G-H-T.
I don't think it should be affected at all either.
Because it will take board action to happen and I would hope that the board action would be sufficiently early that people would not have plans in place that they can't change.
If the superintendent recommends that we use spring break, it needs to come to the board. The calendar is a policy item, so changing the calendar has to come to the board.
Okay.
Changing, changing what happened during the day does not need to come to the board. But changing the length of the school year, not the hundred, needs to come to the board. So if we want to go for five more days, ten more days, it needs to come to the board.
The other possibility that some other districts in the area have taken that we didn't, we didn't do because we didn't act as early as they did. But if we think ahead to next year, February 19th is another day that conceivably could be, you know, instead of having two days for President's Day, just have one day. So if we have, if we have a bunch of snow days in January like we have this year, maybe we ought to, maybe we ought not to have a vacation day on February 19th.
So we could bring that to the board at that particular time. I did not recommend February 19th this year. So some school districts like Wellington and some others are using that day.
Mansfield's doing it.
Mansfield is using both days, I believe, the 19th and the 20th, both days. Well, they do have some more days than us anyway. They have one or two more days than us. They have that situation with the electricity, with the electric powers that, so they have two or three days. But I put it out there to the teachers and administrators and I did not receive further feedback. And so based on their feedback, I decided not to bring it up as a suggestion. We will, I will recommend March the 9th, but not February the 20th. But next year, if we are in the same situation, we can bring that to the board with sufficient time and let teachers and administrators know that we're considering using one of those days.
We just have to act early enough so that people don't have plans that they feel, you know, it would be difficult to change.
I'm sorry, Dr. Garcia, I think Dr. Sewell, you remember when we used to have a full February vacation?
Yes.
And we took it away, the two and a half hours of public outrage, I mean, comments that we heard that night about how we were taking their February vacation away and they already had plane tickets and stuff like that. I just, I don't believe that clause belongs there. I think we have the right to do that at any time and I am aware of that. I don't think that clause belongs in there at all, so that's just my opinion. Thank you.
I second that. I don't think we should take anything away from the April-spring break.
This doesn't say that we're taking it away. This, I want to be clear. It doesn't say that we're taking it away. I want to, what it says here is that the board has the possibility to the right that it could be taken from there. It doesn't say that we want to take it away. Personally, I was a superintendent many years ago, one of my first year of superintendent when I did this, and I totally experienced those, I do not want to do it again because everybody has a plane ticket to go somewhere, from Utah to California to the Middle East, everywhere. And so I don't want to say plane ticket. This is not a very good strategy, but I do not know if we may have fifteen or twenty days of snow. Hopefully, it never happened. But it has to come to the board. The board has to approve it.
Now, when we get this building renovated and it's air conditioned, then we can go late in June without worrying so much about it. At this point, the problem with going until the 20th or the 25th of June is that this building could resemble a roaster oven by that time.
Well, we still have our elementary schools that are on air condition except for Barrows. So for a long time coming, we're not going to have air conditioning in all of our, all of our buildings.
Yes, I understand.
Good issue to study for school planning and design.
It is. I brought that up before. You should talk to the chair.
So I am fine if you, we want to change the language to might be taken from spring break. I'm okay with that.
And we'll debate it, well, let's hope we have a warmer winter next week, next year, then we won't have to worry about it. Okay, is there any additional discussion on the calendar? So are we ready to vote? All in favor?
With the change of might.
With the one word change?
Yes.
Okay. That's unanimous, thank you. Back to, all right, so. Oh, here's a toughie. Entertain a motion to approve the Wyndham High School exchange student trip to Germany.
Second, third.
Let Mr. Colagen second it very honestly because I have a conflict. I have a German student living with me right now. So does Ms. Ray, so I have a conflict. Go ahead.
I second.
We are learning a lot from, a lot of wonderful things from the German students.
Good.
Our kids will not be the same when they come back from Germany.
That's the whole point, no?
That's excellent. My only problem with the program is that it's too few students. We should have opportunities for a lot more students than we do.
They have less vacation in the summertime.
Yes, they only have two months.
They have three months at Christmas, which I think is too much.
Three weeks.
Three weeks, I'm sorry, not three months, three weeks at Christmas. Three weeks, I'm sorry. I just have a concern with the timeliness of this. I've already expressed this to Dr. Garcia, so it's not coming out of left field. We are currently approving an application for a field trip that we have already purchased tickets for. We already have students from Germany who are here and we have already purchased tickets for our students to go there. I brought this up in November and again in December, that we need to approve this field trip. I know there's been some chaos surrounding this, so I don't know if it's a policy thing or if it's a procedural thing, but I think that at some point, my daughter went on the Spain field trip that went a bit more smoothly than this. I don't know if it's a procedural thing or a policy thing, which is why I'm bringing it up now, but there is no set schedule, set programming, set way of doing things that has existed that makes this, this isn't a surprise to you.
No, 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 we have this conversation, also, thank you.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not pulling anything here, but there's no, this has been, I don't want to say poorly planned because they're having a good time, but a lot of the planning has been last minute and kind of reactive instead of proactive. And I would really like to see the district, the policy committee, someone put together some kind of boilerplate for six months before you submit it to the Board of Education for approval, before we start fundraising, before we accept students, before we, you know, when we make first contact with another school district to have this. And then three months before you secure this. And funding gets, you know, discussed six months or a year before or something like that. That way, I know there are at least one student who is unable to go now to Germany because funding, the amount of the trip cost came out and a week later it was due. And that became too much for that person's family to, I don't want to be gender specific or anything, too much for that person's family to be able to accommodate. So that's a concern for me. And I just wanted to put that out there as a point of order to make things go a little bit more smoothly next time because having the students here has been spectacular. If you all can come, all the board members and central office tomorrow night to the dinner and ask them what they think of the way American schools are run and how things are done here and stuff like that, they'll have some very interesting conversations for you. They shadowed yesterday for the first time for a full day and I picked up six of the girls in my car and I started in German and I said, no, 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 English, English, because I wanted to know what they were saying. And some of their opinions and some of the things they really loved about American schools and some of the things they were really shocked by, some surprised me and some didn't. And it's good for other people to hear that input too. So I just, I wish it was a little more smoothly run and I wish that we had approved this before we bought the tickets because if somebody decided now, a couple of years ago, there was a problem with a field trip and a board member's like, I think we need to table this. There are nine parents at least right now that are out close to a thousand dollars, which for me, to a trip for two weeks to Germany is, you know, more than reasonable, but that could be a concern, so.
So you and I have the discussion and my apologies that they said not run smoothly. However, we have had trips that run very smoothly, the trip to Spain was run very smoothly. We had students that went to Spain and students that came from Spain to here. Last year is not a matter of policy, it's not a matter of procedure, it was a matter of leadership. So we had to make some changes in leadership and administration of the program. And because we saw that the program was not, the leadership and administration of the program was not doing what the policy and the protocol of the program recommend, the district recommend. And so that's what happened here. But I, I know that this is not a wonderful experience for you, this program, but last year when we had the trip to Spain, it was a wonderful experience for the board and for us. So we have one that went very well, we have one that is a little bit, needed some progress monitoring or some support or some guidance. Hopefully, we have another one that we will learn from the first one, we'll learn from the second one and the third one will be, would be on target.
The other point is just to amend this, they're going April 10th to the 24th, not the 12th to the 26th. The tickets that were purchased for the 10th to the 24th.
Oh, okay.
I just noticed that. The tickets were purchased this week and I just noticed when I'm looking at this.
Well, let's do make the approval match the, match the tickets.
April 12th to the 26th.
No.
Yeah, it's April 12th to the 26th.
But the tickets are for the 10th to the 24th?
Date of departure, April 10th.
That's, yes, that's what I said.
Date of return, April 26th.
Yes. So 10th to 26th, okay.
No, date of departure, April 12th, date of return, April 26th.
American Airlines Flight 1982, 10 April 18 at 12:45 PM to 3:10 PM, Boston to Charlotte. Return flight, April 24, April 18, 10:35 AM, 10:30 PM, Frankfurt to Philadelphia.
What date is April 12th and April 26th, what day are those?
The 10th is a Tuesday, the 12th is a Thursday. They're departing on the 10th and they are coming back on the 24th. The tickets have already been purchased.
Dr. Garcia, this does say that these, on this form at that time, it was tentative dates.
Tensive dates.
Yes, it says that on the form.
I just want a clarification. I'm positive of these dates.
Okay, well, if they've already.
Putting my baby on a plane, so I'm positive.
Let's amend, let's amend the approval to.
Janet, they say it was tentative on those dates, the 12th to the 26th?
That's what it says on the written one here in the corner.
Okay, so it's the 10th to the 24th. However, in the, in the approval recommendation, Mrs. Lambert does say 10th to the 24th. In the approval recommendation, it said 10th to the 24th.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the actual application, realizing that it had the incorrect dates, so I wanted to give the correct ones.
Do get the dates matched up.
But in the recommendation, it said 10th to the 24th.
Right.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion? If not, are we ready to vote? All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Action item D, the superintendent recommends rescheduling the professional development day, currently scheduled to March 9th, and returning that to a school day that would make the professional development day the day after the last day of school, is that correct?
Well, no, we, okay, so we're planning.
The development day.
This is a professional development day in the calendar for teachers and we are proposing to take that day and make it a regular school day.
Yes.
Okay, so that would put us, right now we have seven days, so we'll have to make up six after school if we don't have any additional days. So teachers will have to come one extra day at the end of the year. Last year, we did have professional development day at the end of the year. I don't think it would be my recommendation to have. I don't think it would be my recommendation to have that this year, based on feedback and based on what I saw last year, but I think it will be a day for teachers to really clean their, their rooms and getting ready for the next school year, because there'll be lots of changes taking place. However, so, there will be some maybe financial implication for this, maybe for oral employees that will have to come that day, on March 19th.
Okay. So, let's get a motion on the floor. Somebody like to...
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any, any additional discussion? But if financial implications being it'll add a little bit to the budget, how much are we talking about, hundreds of dollars?
No, no, it's not going to be much. Those will be some, some oral employees, the salary employees are not the problem, so there is some oral employees that will have to come, that we said will have to come for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't looked at the amount, but it's not going to be anything to break the, break the budget.